All right, okay. So we have our council members in tonight and council member Barosco is going to be coming in a little later. We will, but we will continue to commence the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Accessory Agency and Finance and Authority June 16th meeting. So we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our West Sacramento Police Chief Rob Strange.
Thank you very much for the honor of leading the pledge. If you could all join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief Strange. We are honored that you are saying the pledge tonight as well. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, members of the West Sacramento City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via Zoom. To reduce the spread of COVID-19, members of the public are also asked to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's website or wave cable. We will have a live public comment process and we will also continue to receive written comments, which we have received via email, and they will also be posted on the city's website. To provide a live public comment during the meeting, join the meeting using the Zoom meeting link, which is hyperlinked or the phone number listed on the city's website. I will request public comment during Item 1A.
This meeting is being recorded.
The consent and after, hold on, sorry. And after each item is, you know, after the staff report. And if you'd like to, and if you're joining the meeting via Zoom, press the raise hand button, or if you're joining the meeting by phone, press the star nine when it is your turn to comment. The clerk will call you by name or phone number and will unmute your microphone. Each person will be allowed three minutes and the clerk will notify you when you have about 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. And once your three-minute or public comment has ended, you will be muted again. And you may also join by phone dialing 1-669-900-9128, ID number 920-9564-2935, pass code 004264. And we'll move to our closed session. City Attorney, would you please provide the report on what happened in closed session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The council met in closed session to consider the initiation of litigation for the matter identified in your agenda. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you. And next item is Item 1A, which are presentations by the public on matters not included on the agenda and council members are prohibited from discussion on any matter presented under this item. Mr. Clerk, Madam Clerk, sorry. Do we have anything in writing or live public comment request?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and members of the public. We did not receive any public comments, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. The next item is Item 1B, Council Communications from our assignments.
I'm sorry, Mayor Guerrero, it looked like there was a hand raised.
Oh, there is a hand raised, I see. Thank you for catching that.
Maria Gralva, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I wanted to thank Chief Strange for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I was actually just reaching out to him and I was going to ask for support and help with the council with an incident because I'm a nonprofit and I was helping a homeless person that has issues. And yesterday, that person struck the phone, my cellphone, out of my hand and we had a clinician come over and all the resources went to helping that individual. And so Officer Mahasi left without taking a report from me. And when I followed up with the officer regarding me being, having the phone struck out of my hand and the individual actually having a steak knife, brandishing a steak knife, the officer said that it did not require a police report and that, and that the clinician was, you know, all that was needed. And so I wanted to just seek your support in this matter and I'm so glad that Chief Strange led us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you. And seeing that there are no other public comments, we'll move on to our next item, 1B, which is Council Communications from our assignments. And Councilmember Alcala.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 9th, the Yellow Solano Air Quality Management Board met and the following items were brought before the board. We received and accepted the long range planning calendar. We approved Resolution 21-02 authorizing the district's participation in the Employment Risk Management Authority. We approved a new job classification of administrative analyst. We approved a calendar for APCO, which is the Air Pollution Control Officer Report. There was a public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 through 2022. We approved the Clean Air Project for the 2021 programs. And there was a public hearing on certification that the Yellow Solano Air Quality Management District Non-Atainment New Reserve Review Program meets the requirements for the implementation of the 2015 Ozone National Ambient to Air Quality Standard. And the meeting was adjourned.
Thank you, Councilmember Alcala. Mayor Protemla Desma.
Thank you. Just wanted to report today, which is this past Monday, we had a meeting of the Yellow County Transportation District. The few items on the agenda, but mainly the part I'll report out is the board went ahead and passed a budget for the 2021-2022 year. And so it's been a lot of work for the team. They, our old friend, management consultant that's guiding the district right now, Marty Tuttle, he's doing a great job, but they made some budget revisions and sort of how they organize it. I think it's more clean about how the administrative costs are being calculated or being identified there. So I just wanted to applaud the Transit District Staff for good work on their budget. We also talked about, as we reopen, which is basically effective this week on the state, YCTD is starting to consider policies and changes to its COVID-related safety protocols, as you are aware, a number of different protocols were brought up on the onset of COVID. So staff is carefully starting to pour back through those and understand the impacts of those and which they want to remain, which we want to maybe move aside as folks are getting vaccinated. So again, just some things that are topics that are continuing to be moving forward, but that's all I really have to impart for the meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Protemla Desma. And for my report, the Yellow County Compact members met on June 11th to discuss among our jurisdictions in Yellow County, which includes City of Davis, City of Winter, City of Woodland, UC Davis, Yolo County Housing, Yellow County. And Mr. Tilly joined me at this meeting. The last several meetings have been focused on specific issues and this meeting was to focus on historically interesting items of importance. Several presentations were provided, including our RT and about a broad range of our activities and programs that relate to climate and sustainability and equity. And the purpose of the compact is been to have a cross-fertilization for building common regional purposes around these topics. And it has been unique and we've been able to look at working continuously and it's been going on since 2007, but I've just recently joined. And earlier this week, I had lunch with our new cohort of the Home Run Internship Program Participants. And the Home Run Internship Program is one part of our larger initiative that is meant to prepare young people for college and careers, strengthen West Sacramento's workforce and build relationships between our youth and local professionals and business owners and show young people that they are valued in our community, which is most important, especially in this period after COVID. You know, they're ready to get out and get some job experience and it was really so delightful to be able to meet with them and to meet with their supervisors who they were partnered up with to learn more about what their internship program is entailed and then just to get some training and preparation for them to be successful. I want to, you know, thank those, you know, that put this together and I see Justine and here and there's, I know a whole team that did a lot of hard work. I saw the packets to prepare and, you know, these are high school students, so there is a lot of work permits and documentation just to get them all set up and, you know, shared my experience, but what the city is providing here is just pretty extraordinary for our youth and really proud of the work that we, that I observed and the work we are doing on behalf of our youth. And in addition, last Friday evening, I spent about six hours on a West Sac PD ride-along and I was given the ride-along with Officer, partnered up with Officer Montez. Officer Montez is the first officer that has given me a tour. I've done several ride-alongs, West Sacramento Police Department, but he gave me a tour of the entire department. I have to say I'm very impressed with how well organized it is and for the, for the tiny little department, they are definitely a tiny but mighty department that is doing, you know, some very good work in maintaining, you know, not only protecting our city, but providing resources to vulnerable members for domestic violence or, or child abuse or other resources, so to help mitigate those that they, that I've observed even on the ride-along. Calls were being made for intervention for those issues. The mental health, you know, intervention as well. So the call included, I'm sorry, the evening included two DUIs in two separate parts of the city, one in the north and one way in the south. And in addition to that, like it was all happening within the same timeframe, you know, there was a home invasion of an elderly gentleman on West Capitol, so that was in the center. And trying to be able to, you know, identify and, you know, get the suspects detained was quite a workload for our police department in addition to all these other activities that were going on. And it gave me a really close, you know, up close, you know, experience to be able to see how stretched thin our police force is. And what it does, you know, in my experience is, you know, for example, for the DUIs, they need to provide traffic safety and making sure that those that are the oncoming traffic, it doesn't hurt anybody. And so our police officers out there directing traffic and there's not enough police officers to address that. Well, if there's somebody with a DUI, you have to do a field sobriety test and you have, there's a lot of steps that our police officers have to take to ensure that the individuals' you know, civil rights are protected as well. And so just the knowledge and the experience and the way they handle themselves and, you know, by the way, as far as the home invader, I know one was captured, I was present to be able to see that, you know, engagement and that process happened as well and, and the interrogation that happened along with that. So very intensive, a little one got traumatized, but I will say that that is very intense for one person. And, and I know that, you know, Officer Montez is on his game because he went back to back to back on, on each of these tasks and handled, you know, every situation with precision and depth of understanding and professionalism. And I know all of them, you know, are a team and very supportive of one another and that's how they work well together. You know, I was actually there for the briefing and then the rollout later on in the evening. And just the transporting of the suspect, I accompanied Officer Montez to, to do that. And so, you know, observing that Officer Montez is out of West Sacramento for a good like hour and a half to two hours, maybe three, depending on how many suspects are being taken to Yellow County because that's where everybody goes. It could be all the jurisdictions that I initially mentioned. And so, you know, we, we can be out for one, you know, one police officer, all the different activities that I've just described that is going on because that's the jurisdiction all the way out in Woodland. So just wanted to share that with you and encourage my fellow council members to do a ride-along. Taught me a lot and definitely deepen my respect and appreciation for our police department. And with that, move on to Item 1C. We have no appointments. And next is our Consent Agenda Items 2 through 16. I do see an Agenda Item 11 has an errata in there and I'd like to check in with our city manager about, about that. Is there, because I received an email and I just wanted to follow up with you on how we're going to handle that.
Yes, that was on Item 11. You said, right? The only item that's different on that report is the type of license. So in the report, I believe it noted a Type 21, also with the license, in fact, the applications for a Type 20 and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but a Type 20 is simply a pure and blind license. A Type 21 is a different kind of license. So that's an important distinction for the side of.
Thank you. Do we have to reference that if, when we take action?
Yeah, just when, if the item is moved with the consent agenda, you would just make the motion with the change recommended by staff.
Thank you. And next we'll ask if there are any council members who would like to remove any items from the consent agenda for Councilmember Alcala.
Number two.
Nope, all right. We'll move on to item number two. Councilmember Alcala, I did see a lot of public comment on this item, so I do have some questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I also received calls from constituents and their concern is it's, the proposal is for 40 miles an hour in that area. And the recommendation from many of the people who live in that area, because there are so many children, many seniors in that area, that'd be 25 to 30 miles an hour. And I just wanted to know, you know, how this had been determined and also if we had gotten public input from residents in that area.
Good evening, councilmembers. That section of Davis Road has actually not been reviewed as part of this group of segments that we analyzed. It's going to be included in a future review. That's going to happen within the next few months. So as far as the speed limit on, along Davis Road, we still have to go back and analyze it. It hasn't been set or renewed as part of this group of segments.
And I noticed that there were other requests to reduce the speed. Now, I know that reducing the speed doesn't always reduce those that are speeding, they'll do it anyways, but in selecting these particular streets, is there like a, it might have been written in the report, but can you describe the rationale for that, that, that were selected here for, which are, there's no changes from what I can tell?
Yeah, no changes. And I actually coordinated these specific segments with the police department, just high priority segments that they've seen a lot of, you know, that they've had a lot of concerns with. And then for the next batch of segments that are going to be coming to council as well in the future, I've also been coordinating with them just to make sure that we prioritize the segments that need to be prioritized and then work on the following. And Davis Road will be included and there are additional segments that will be coming forward, but.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ortiz. And you're our junior engineer for capital projects and transportation department, so thank you for that.
Yes.
I had a question. The question I had just in reading the report, some of the, some of the information was gathered during COVID and, you know, so there wasn't a whole lot of traffic around that I observed at that time, around that timeframe, it was peak and everybody was sheltering in place, not going out. Is, did that have any influence on the outcome of the study that was done?
So that's one of the reasons why we waited to complete some of this data collection. We wanted to make sure that, especially during the beginning of the pandemic, when everything was, all the, everything was really different, we wanted to make sure that that was going to not impact our data. However, when we did do the data collection, especially for speed limits, the way that there are, the data is collected, it's during free flow. So it's not during any, you know, high traffic volume time periods. So it wouldn't really impact the speed data, if that's okay, if that makes sense. It's a little complicated and we did take into consideration and we looked at, you know, changes from this data to the data that was collected in 2013. So that's why we moved forward with these, these segments and luckily there were no changes that we recommended to these segments. So it didn't really impact our data. And it's actually, you mentioned in our report that, that I provided or prepared.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll, I'll open it up for public comment if there are no other questions. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
There are no speakers, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close it. And I do want to just reference, I see seven pages of public comment. I think this is all related to item number two. And from Karen Gold, Davis Road residential area is 40 miles per hour is too fast. She doesn't walk on Davis Road for fear of speeding cars that use it as a thoroughfare to downtown. And Madeline Hernandez referenced that West Capitol and Pecan, there are three safety issues, but I think that's a little different than speeding, but she referenced a crosswalk. Danny Langford referenced lowering the speed limit on Davis Road from 25 to 30 miles. And the rationale is to, you know, put some, you know, more traffic enforcement if you lower the speed. It's a little too fast, especially for, for those that are living there with children and pets. And it's also frequented by horse riders and cyclists. So the concern is if it's too fast, it's really difficult for people to maneuver themselves and get out of the way and the harm could be done. And let's see, Levon Cohen also referenced Davis Road and given that it's a two-lane residential road with single-family homes and it's 40 miles an hour, I think that's, she thinks it's excessive. And it seems to be a major thoroughfare for Bridgeway residents to avoid Crotta-Jefferson Boulevard. So Village Parkway is just more accommodating for people traveling through the city and Davis Road is used a lot and they would like to go out and have a study done on the volume and traffic. And also Sheila Cola referenced, she'd like the item number two to go to Transportation, Mobility and Infrastructure Commission. I do see that it is being recommended for that from what I've read in the report. Is that correct, Ms. Ortiz?
Yeah, so we didn't take this item to the TMI Commission for review because we were, we're not making any changes to current speed limits. I think our plan was to take any items that were recommending any changes in the future, but if this is an item that we need to take to the TMI Commission, I think we can, we can go ahead and do that as well.
Okay. And in, you know, some of the concerns were related to pedestrian and, you know, safety of those of cyclists, pets and pedestrians. Is that factored in into the study in some way?
So we, yeah, so we do look into, you know, collision data. Everything is looked at when we determine the speed limits, especially a residential area. I think that would make it bigger. Yeah, it would be taken into consideration. And yeah, I think, I think it would be, it just, it just depends. There's a lot of factors that are taken into consideration when setting the speed limits.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. All right, I'll take these items up, the consent agenda items up for a vote with the change on item number 11. Mayor Protemla Desma.
I will move the recommended action.
Councilmember Alcala, second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Mayor Protemla Desma.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Okay, this item is approved and we are going to move to our next regular agenda item number 17 under Finance and Technologies, Consideration of Our Fiscal Year 2021, 2022 and Fiscal Year 2022, 2023 Operations and Maintenance and Capital Improvement Program, you know, Budget Workshop. And our city manager will lead tonight's discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'm just going to give a brief introduction to frame the item for tonight. So mainly I wanted to begin by recapping on where we've been with this budget process for a bit of perspective on the place we're at today. So for the past year plus, as we've been dealing with and coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic, we were faced with tremendous uncertainty about the impacts of the government budgets. Staff did our best to navigate that uncertainty, but along the way, we tried to provide accurate information, as accurate as we could, given the uncertainty to the council about potential impacts. So as a result, really credit the council. You took our advice to heart during that process. You proceeded very cautiously, not knowing what might be ahead, particularly as it related to potential impacts on our core services, because many of those financial hits were projected to be to the general fund. Things like TOT, sales tax, a lot of that uncertainty was around those sources. So today, fortunately, we can, we can fairly safely say that we're in a really good place financially, but it was thanks to a lot of work over the past year to control costs, to wait out the impacts, and fortunately, to receive some much needed assistance from the federal government to help replace lost revenues and also to reimburse us for expenses related to the pandemic. For much of that last year, though, because of that uncertainty and the times we were facing, Roberta and I began the process to frame the strategy for how we might create additional capacity in the general fund to hedge against what, what may be ahead. So now fast forward to today and we're fortunate to be able to tell you that because of our city's solid financial situation and thanks to the ARP funding that we're receiving, we're projecting a meaningful general fund surplus. We came to you about a month ago with that good news. We presented the budget that carried forward the past two-year budget, but also provided recommendations to fund additional items to supplement our current operations, but also to invest more heavily in maintenance and also to invest in infrastructure like we do every year with the CIP. But at that workshop, that was on May 19th, you all, understandably so, asked us to pump the brakes a little bit on that plan. You unanimously agreed with the notion that more attention should be given to the sustainability of our general fund so that not only can we afford the items that we're proposing in the budget, but also we can keep up with service needs, we can stay competitive with staffing levels and compensation levels, and also so we can keep up with the maintenance of our facilities and infrastructure. And I do recognize that. We appreciate that recognition, applaud the council for that. And in that direction is why tonight we're proposing the budget approach that's outlined in the report. Simply put, we're recommended the council carry forward a budget, the budget from, from last year, the last two years, plus a limited number of supplemental budget requests to be described in the report, has been in the report for a couple of meetings now, along with capital improvement projects that are urgently needed to either keep up with service levels or to fulfill project requirements that we have, either through the grant or because other projects that are needed to go. We'll, we'll spend about the next 100 days or so doing the thorough analysis of our general fund expenses to complete the work that Roberta and I had already started, like I mentioned before, with the overall goal to come back to you around October with a series of proposed amendments to the two-year budget. So the budget we're proposing tonight, we have full expectation that it would be amended to expand the current capacity in the general fund. That work will also include presenting the council with proposed strategies to ensure that the general fund can remain sustainable well beyond this two-year budget as the city continues to grow and our service needs evolve. So there'll be some important policy decisions for the council to make ahead of going into that. We understand the direction you've given us, though, and we're looking forward to getting, getting on with that important work. Before tonight, we're respectfully recommending the council consider the two-year budget approach that we outlined in the report, again, with a full understanding that we'll be back to you to amend it once our work is done on that general fund sustainability strategy. So I'm going to turn it over to Roberta because she's going to go over some, some details about the proposed budget, the changes that we made since the last workshop on June 2nd. And just a reminder, we have a whole team of staff representing each department in the city if you have questions about individual items. So with that, I'll turn it over to Roberta. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin, and good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm going to share my screen for a presentation. Tell me you can see the slides. Do I have the right screen up?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. It's hard for me to tell here. Okay. So getting started, I know Erin mentioned that we have spent the last couple of meetings with you, having budget workshops. Tonight, we are, we are presenting the proposed ONM and CIP budgets for the next two years and requesting the council take action on those budgets. So I always have to figure out how to move this. Okay, so I'll start off also with a little bit of background and as Erin mentioned, we'll talk about the changes from what's proposed tonight, from what was presented at the June 2nd workshop. I'll also summarize the entire budget proposal that we are requesting council action on tonight, provide a summary of the general fund impacts, look at the um, provide a summary of the general fund impacts, look at the next steps, um, and then focus on the recommended action, um, and open it up at that point for, uh, council, uh, questions, comments, discussion. So, uh, for the background, we have spent, uh, quite a bit of time over the past two meetings in budget workshops um, and in individual meetings with council members, um, going over the requests, responding to questions. So tonight's presentation will be brief, allowing time for council discussion and consideration of the, uh, actions requested of you tonight. Um, let's see, first we will, um, oh, I, did I go past the agenda? Well, first we'll provide a little bit of background, like I said, and then we'll get into the other options. So in the background, um, we have held budget workshops with the council in the last two meetings, May nineteenth and June second. Uh, in the first workshop, council expressed concern about adopting general fund requests, given the lost revenues from the pandemic and uncertainties surrounding the recovery of those revenues with the reopening of the economy. Council also expressed a desire for staff to develop a general fund sustainability strategy to address future budget needs for personnel growth, employee compensation and general maintenance of city, uh, infrastructure and facilities. At the May nineteenth meeting, uh, in response to those comments, staff proposed an alternative approach to the budget to include the adoption of the status quo budget, which is basically continuing the existing, uh, operations and maintenance budget with required adjustments. So, um, example of, of those include, um, P G and E rate increases, CalPERS required contributions. Um, but all of the items in the, in the, um, status quo O N M budget are things that were in the budget last year that were approved by council just with those minor modifications for, uh, changes we know are required. Um, and also prioritizing the supplemental requests to consider only those requests that need to be considered now to avoid disruption to operations and service to citizens. Uh, so after that meeting, staff reviewed the supplemental requests, um, really focusing on the general fund impacts. Um, we prioritize requests that would cause significant operational impacts if they were delayed. Um, requests that, that would negatively impact service to citizens and customers if delayed. Um, and as a result of the process, over half of all the requests in dollars, um, and eighty-five percent of the general fund requests were proposed to be delayed, uh, for future consideration, once the general fund sustainability strategy is developed and, and considered and adopted by council. So the reprioritized requests were presented to council at the June second workshop. Um, the report provided for the last workshop included, uh, both a listing of the requests that are proposed to move forward for consideration now and a listing of the requests that were, were proposed to be delayed for future consideration. Uh, council had a lengthy discussion and ultimately appeared, it appeared that a majority of the council supported the status quo O N M budget proposal and the prioritized supplemental requests. Um, at that meeting, the council also requested an appropriation from Measure E to extend Project Home Key for one month, um, assuming that those costs will ultimately be reimbursed, uh, by county, state or federal government. Which brings us to the, the, uh, small list of changes in the proposed budget tonight versus what was presented at the last meeting. So first, we added the appropriation request to extend Project Home Key per the council direction at the June second workshop. Um, second, the Southport Levy Trailhead Project had requested appropriations from multiple funding sources, but in the second year of the budget. The Measure E appropriation request had been, um, on the list of requests to be delayed, but it has since been moved, uh, uh, up to the list for consideration now. And while the appropriation is for the second year of the budget, uh, council approval of that appropriation is requested now so that the design may be completed around the approved budget, uh, for the project to meet performance requirements of the grant. Uh, third, while the appropriation for the phone system replacement project is proposed to be delayed for future consideration, thirty-five thousand is needed now to continue the work currently underway to select a phone system vendor, um, and negotiate a contract. The full appropriation for the phone system replacement and implementation will be requested in the next month or two, once the vendor selected, um, and the, the cost of, of that implementation and the replacement is known. Um, finally, it was discovered that an existing annual appropriation of fifteen thousand, uh, for network connectivity from City Hall to the corp yard was inadvertently excluded from the status quo O N M budget, and so that has been added in, um, to the budget being presented tonight. So in total, the changes, um, that are, uh, from this meeting from last meeting, there's fifty thousand dollars for the General Support Services Fund. Um, about half of that is allocated to the general fund and four hundred and ninety-eight thousand for Measure E, and, um, of which about a hundred thousand is expected to be reimbursed. All right, so this slide shows your supplemental, uh, operations and maintenance, one-time requests and ongoing requests for the fiscal year, broken down by category. Um, overall, you can see this first bar here is the one-time requests, and those total just over about one point six million across all funds. Uh, the ongoing request, here's fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three. Again, across all funds, totaled just about seven hundred and eleven thousand in the first year and about eight hundred and forty thousand in the second year. For context, the supplemental ongoing requests totaled just over half a percent of total ongoing appropriations across all funds. And the details for the items that are included in, in the one-time and ongoing, uh, O N M requests are included um, as attachments and exhibits to the report that was provided to council on the agenda. All right, so this slide shows the total capital improvement project request for the two years. The chart here on the left shows the C I P requests by project type, and it shows that the transportation projects are clearly the focus of the C I P budget, with a little over six point three million dedicated towards road rehabilitation projects, um, like the West Capital Avenue and the State Streets Road Rehabilitation projects, uh, as well as a few smaller projects for neighborhood road preservation and arterial road repair. Um, and eight point one million, mostly grant funds, uh, in the other transportation-related projects category. The table on the right shows the C I P requests by funding source. So about five hundred and ninety thousand of the total requests are for general fund. That makes up a, a total of about two and a quarter percent of the total requests. Um, about a little over nine point eight million, um, of the requests are, are funded by grant funds. Um, and then if you look through here, the road funds and the enterprise funds, which is water and sewer, uh, provide the highest level of funding from city sources towards the proposed C I P program for the next two years. All right, so this slide shows the general fund summary, um, for ongoing and one-time requests and the impacts those requests will have on the annual surplus and remaining fund balance in the general fund. So ongoing requests, um, after a correction to the cost allocation, uh, will have a net impact on the general fund of about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars annually. And after funding those requests, the general fund is expected to have four hundred and eighty-two thousand in surplus in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two and two point two million in, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The one-time request totaled eight hundred and eighty-two thousand. That includes the five hundred and ninety thousand in capital project requests. Um, and after the cost allocation and adding in the surplus for, for, uh, from the ongoing requests, this fund is, is expected to end with twelve point three million dollars in available fund balance, uh, at, at the end of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, I do have a note here, and I'll just mention to you, the, these cost allocation numbers are estimates at the moment. Um, we, we know how much of, uh, about half, about fifty-three percent of the, the requests in Fund One-O-four are allocated to the general fund, but we need to finish doing that cost, updating that cost allocation based on what's ultimately adopted by council tonight. Um, and so that will be, um, finalized once we have an adopted budget. So, next steps, um, today, staff is seeking council approval of the status quo budget and the prioritized, uh, operation and maintenance and C I P supplemental requests. These appropriations, once approved, will fund expenses beginning July first. After the budget's adopted, as Erin mentioned, uh, staff will work to develop our general fund or continue work on developing a general fund sustainability strategy as requested by council at the May nineteenth meeting. Once that strategy is developed, staff will return to council, likely sometime this fall, for consideration of the sustainability strategy and related budget amendments, including the budget requests that were presented on May nineteenth, um, but were proposed to be delayed at the June second meeting. So, uh, this concludes my presentation for tonight. Uh, we, the actions that are requested, um, and respectfully recommended for council consideration tonight are the adoption of Resolution twenty-one, forty-eight, which will approve the operations and maintenance budgets for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three, including the supplemental O N M requests. Um, provide administrative authority for the finance director to appropriate up to the audited fund balance for special revenue funds that are legally restricted um, and funded by, entirely by grants, uh, and/or external donations. Uh, delegate authority to the city manager to approve purchase orders and contracts over fifty thousand dollars for items included in the council-approved O N M budget. Um, this delegation existed in the council-approved purchasing policy and was inadvertently removed during the most recent policy revision. And it will provide authority for the finance director to create new funds for water and sewer to separately track the debt, capital projects and impact fee revenues and roll the remaining community development divisions into the general fund. Uh, those, uh, all of these items were, were, um, provided detail in the first report to council May nineteenth, and there's a link in your report tonight to, um, to that report for reference. Um, we're also requesting that you adopt Resolution twenty-one dash forty-nine to approve the capital improvement program budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three, and to approve the authorized position list, uh, which would be effective July first. So at that time, at this time, that concludes my presentation, and I'd like to pass it back to the mayor and council for questions, discussions, uh, or a motion.
Thank you, Roberta. Uh, bring it back to, let me open up my windows here. Are there any questions among the council members? Okay. Um, I'll open it up for public comment. At this point, are there any requests for, um, Madam, for public comment?
There are no speakers, Mayor.
Speakers, thank you. Close the public comment, bring it back to council for discussion. And, uh, any, any comments, Mayor Protam, the Desma, questions?
Uh, no, I'll go ahead and make a, a couple of comments here, and, and once again, um, thank you, uh, Roberta for all the work and, and back, it, it just, a lot of work went into this for, for many months, and I know you've been hard at it, trying to better understand uh, our financial situation with the impacts of COVID, and then at the same time, juggling how we're gonna get through, uh, and getting the, uh, federal money. I know you're leading, helping lead the state. A lot of finance directors are leading the state and trying to figure out how we're gonna be able to utilize the dollars that we do get from the, from the federal government. So, thank you for your leadership there. Thanks to all the department staff on your diligence and work, um, on this budget to, uh, really, um, I, I, I'm, I'm really pleased and, and proud of the work you've done and providing some discipline, uh, around your, you, you've, you've, it's apparent you've thought carefully about the expenses you're asking for. Um, clearly, uh, although we're keeping an eye on how to keep the city moving forward, um, and the resources you may need. So, just wanna thank you for your, uh, uh, work and diligence on getting to this point, to this, uh, proposed budget, um, and, uh, and your support for us as we move forward into, uh, sort of this next exercise, uh, and that. And to Erin, thanks for your leadership as well. Appreciate your opening comments, but, um, it's, it's, it's interesting, something you said, um, um, our city manager, who's, who's really been a big part of the, uh, helping us lead us through policies and policy choices that got us here. And, and again, we're, I'm, I'm thankful to the city that, uh, uh, that we're able to kind of be at this point from a very positive, strong, uh, financially strong point that, um, and a lot of the choices we made, and Erin was a big part of that, uh, the, in there, um, um, as part of the staff, uh, leading, helping us lead through, providing investment strategies to, to support, um, our city and find mechanisms to fund the things we think are best for our city. But as you pointed out, and, and, and I, and I totally one hundred percent agree with, we're in a new era here. Um, post, coming out of post-COVID, um, and coming into, back into, or going to an economy where we're not quite sure what our revenues are, uh, will be and how those sustain. We're not sure of the costs that will be ahead of us through, uh, changes and, uh, cost structures that, uh, we, we, we have to mind, the, the expenses of, of, of running a city. Um, and the prudent thing to do is, is to get to this kind of budget and really take hard look at the strategies we have. You've been asking that for that all year. And, uh, this, this budget reflects that, uh, that, uh, commitment, and, and I agree with it. Um, we, we have to think about not just this council and what we live with, but the council in twenty, uh, thirty-one, um, uh, as they, uh, what kind of budget they'll have and what, what kind of table we set for them, um, in terms of having a city that can still thrive, has the resources it needs. Um, I agree with, I appreciate the, the further combing through the expenses to see what, uh, needed to be added back in to the supplemental budget you've asked for. Uh, I'm supportive of those moves. Um, this is a hard exercise, and it's hard for, I understand for folks to, um, uh, maybe understand the, the spending, uh, that we are taking on. Because the department heads, um, and, and all their staffs are thinking, uh, about, uh, projects that we need to get started and need to keep going. And, uh, these are important projects for the city, for amenities, for roads, for a lot of infrastructure we have. And, uh, they, they, um, looking at the, what was termed the A-list last time, plus the additional things this time. Uh, it all makes sense, and it's, it's still prudent, and, uh, we revisit the rest of the items, uh, later in the year. Hopefully, we'll, uh, get to a place where we have, uh, solid, uh, funding solutions. So, just wanted to really make the comment, and just to really, this really terrific work, um, on behalf of the staff, and, like, we have more work to do, and it's all right to, kind of, as best I can in a COVID environment, roll up, roll up our sleeves and, and, um, and, and, and help direct where we go next. And just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, I wasn't gonna comment on that, but thank you for those comments. I, I did wanna point out that, uh, Councilmember Roscoe was inadvertently, uh, left in the attendee side of the meeting. She is present, so, um, just wanted to note that. I apologize for the mix-up there.
Okay, thank you. Is she able to come in on the, uh, so, because I can't see if she wants to. Oh, there you are. Great, okay.
I'm here, thank you.
Sorry about that.
All right, we've, we've, uh, just, uh, we received a presentation from Roberta on the budget and, um, just some modifications from, um, our last meeting on additional items that were left out. Um, in the resolution, you'll see our action items that, um, we are, that are proposed to be taken tonight. And, um, we are just providing comments and feedback. I gather you have had several meetings and discussions already about it, and just wanted to, we're just going over, and we've had public comment already, so we're now in our, um, council communication, you know, with, uh, staff at this point, questions or comments. And, uh, just, uh, if there are any other, if there are no other comments or questions, I'll, I'll, um, ask my own questions that I have. All right, so, um, in, in reviewing what's ongoing funding and, um, you know, what's in a projected balance, and like the general fund, for example, ongoing surplus is the four hundred and eighty-two thousand plus, and then you, you referenced like the, um, two million, um, for the projected, and what that can be used for is like one time, but not necessarily like available for, you know, future, like for example, employee salaries or benefits or anything like that. I just wanted to get some, some clarification about that.
Yes, the ongoing, uh, annual surplus, the four hundred and eighty-something thousand in the first year and the two point two million in the second year, those are available for ongoing, um, appropriations, including, uh, new positions, employee adjustments, those types of things. The one-time, um, available balance at the end of the two years, the twelve, a little over twelve million, uh, that's one time. So it, it, it's, um, have been, it has been amassed in, in the fund, um, from annual surpluses that have not been used in previous years, and so that is available to fund, uh, one-time items, um, and not ongoing items.
If I could just add to that, um, in terms of the, one of the reasons we do a two-year budget is to have a better look ahead. Um, in this case, we're looking at the second year with a larger surplus, projected to be two point two million. Part of what we'll be doing when we come back, um, in October, um, would be to have a better look at that number, but also how it might relate to the first year budget. And given that you have a fairly substantial one-time budget availability in the general fund, one of the things that the council would have a policy choice to make is bringing up some of that money, for lack of a better term, uh, some of the one-time money to augment that first-year budget. So, uh, you could end up with a, a functional, you know, two-year budget surplus of two point two million by adding one-time money to the first year. So that's something that we'll be looking at and, uh, bringing back as a, as a policy choice to the council when we come back.
Thank you. And in, um, in, in taking a look at this, I just wanna be able to, um, you know, thank you for that feedback. Um, I really appreciate it. Because my, you know, as, as you've identified here in the analysis, um, some of the concerns that were raised, uh, which is making sure all of our employees, um, you know, those that are, you know, on, uh, parts and wreck, you know, home run program, um, you know, just those that are, um, you know, taking care of our, our roads and, and maintenance, um, You know, all of our employees are, are taken care of and their benefits are addressed, including the managers who we want to, you know, you know, keep them here, but we don't want them to move on to another city. Because there is, it's a small network of cities out here and it's very competitive. So, you know, they get excellent experiences. You're providing some great staff work for us. And what we would like to do is to make sure that we have the capacity to, you know, provide competitive wages and benefits in the future. And we know that, that, that comes with the hook of, you know, paying the retirement. And I, I want to say that, you know, I reviewed your analysis and, you know, take, took to heart the feedback that we have been providing, the concerns that were raised if we use too much of the general fund to pay for a lot of the items. And to just increase more capacity, because the general fund is my, my perception is what's used for those particular uses for employee benefits and compensation. Unless there's, we could use other funding sources as well that I've perceived, like measure N, for example, or measure E that I've seen are covering like the home run program and other contracted programs that we are administering as a city. So, you know, with that, you know, taking a look at some of the ideas that are floating around out there. One of the, you know, suggestions is the use of measure N, which is for a, a, a number of things that I'd like to be able to see if we can transfer our, like our community services, our West Sacramento Police Department's, you know, community services division, that's the outreach, the new division. If we could put some of those resources into, you know, either a measure N or an E, because that is a new initiative and restore the five police officer positions, just based on my experience on the ride along. You know, it was really, very concerning on the liability that we have as a city to see how that might impact, you know, the safety of either one of our police officers or in, in any of our individuals who are out in the community, if we don't have the resources out on the street. And in addition to that, you know, there are other ideas that I've heard floating around in relation to being able to transition, either like the homeless coordinator that is funded with Mark Sawyer's position, I think originally was out of measure E, if we can take a look at that. And, you know, those are just some ideas, but we can continue to discuss those. In, in your recommended actions and in the budget, I didn't see ARP included, but like we've had a, a discussion, Roberta, I know you're going to bring that back as a future discussion item. But it's not folded into the ARP, which I, you know, as far as funding in the, the general fund that we were taking a look at to absorb ARP, to recoup our losses. So just looking forward to hearing when that will take place and hopefully soon, I understand there'll be an August update provided by the feds, the treasurer, to see how we can expend that funding here locally. And, you know, there's, as the city manager mentioned, that he is going to take a look at a general fund sustainability strategy, like to add in the recommended actions to make sure that we have direct staff to establish a financial sustainability strategy by October thirty first. So include that as part of the recommended action. And also to appoint, you know, myself and our mayor, Potem Madesma for meeting with our city staff to do regular check-ins to see how that is going. I think the last thing I'd like to be able to see is having October thirty first roll around and we all see it for the first time. So this will give us a time, a chance to be able to review and provide some, some thoughts, not, you know, preventing the council from being able to review everything, but just some thoughts on, on what we're seeing. Making sure we're, we're going in the direction from all the discussions we've been having here. And in addition to that, I just want to add Mayor Potem Madesma's comments and that staff has been doing an incredible job. And, you know, some of the things that I, I've observed that other cities have done is have like public input. And in the process, I, I'm interested in having a citizens fiscal oversight and accountability commission as part of one, as part of the actions that are taken here. Because this is a, a major undertaking and I do get a lot of questions about how the measures are expended and whether or not it is, you know, delivering the services and some, what, what this achieves is, you know, support and understanding that we are, I think, and that's what you're doing, expending the resources as, you know, guided by the voters, as we, you know, put on the voter ballot and mentioning that this is where the money's going to be going. And some of them may be pretty broad and policy was established, but I think, I think it still is a good opportunity for us to work with the public through the Oversight Accountability Commission. So to include that as a possible action, if my colleagues are supportive of that. And I think that about covers everything that, I just want to say, I appreciate all the hard work you've all been doing. I know all the staff and, you know, you, you've put in a lot of time and energy and I know this is not, this is probably the most stressful, is working, working to prepare a budget and then the next is expending it, just a lot of energy and work that goes into that. And I just want to share my, my appreciation for all your hard work and being able to get this done. And, and to hang in there with us as council members, as, you know, our job is to be, you know, providing the hundred-foot level overview of what we'd like done and receive your guidance. And one of the, you know, discussions in our last meeting was a continuing resolution and appreciate your, your background on how that does fit into what we're doing today. And that there's flexibility among my colleagues to be able to take a look at the budget and, and to repackage it so that, you know, we ensure that it is delivering the public, you know, infrastructure needs that the city, and Aaron, you've been doing a great job over the years and appreciate all your background and your hard work. And just want to give you a big pat on the back for all of the policy that you've put into what we have today as a budget that gives us a long-term plan and kind of gives, give us the framework so that we can think through more clearly how to provide the best decision-making process on behalf of the people that we're serving. So just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. And if I could just quickly respond, just to sort of recap a couple of suggestions there, give some comments. Definitely on the, the recommended action, we, we didn't include a recommended action to, an affirmative one to come back with the plan. We did say in the report, obviously, that we would be doing it. So I think staff would be very comfortable with adding that action, you know, we, we want to be accountable to the council with that. So that, that would, that would be a, a suggestion that I, I would, I would definitely encourage. The part about establishing a, a new commission, I think that deserves some council discussion, maybe, maybe about tonight, mayor may not be the right place to have it because that is more of a substantive policy discussion. I think last time that the council decided to amend commissions, I believe it was discussed in the context of, of one of the strategic plan sessions. I'm not positive about that, but it was a larger policy discussion. And there may be other, other reasons to locate city commissions. So I don't want to discourage you from having that discussion, but just in terms of moving forward tonight, you know, keeping the focus on, on the budget first, but we, we would certainly appreciate any feedback everyone has on that. We could set up a, the right kind of framework to have that, that bigger discussion about, about commissions, if, if that works. But definitely on the adding recommended action for bringing that back, this sustainability strategy, I think from staff perspective, it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, oh, there's two that went up. I don't know, I think Roscoe, you're first and then councilmember Akala, you're next.
Thank you. I agree. I think that the, with respect to the Oversight Commission, that is, that's a, that is a larger policy discussion that we should definitely discuss. I, I think that accountability is first and foremost and it would be great to see, you know, an appointee from each of the council members, if that's the way, you know, but we should probably discuss that as a group. As a signatory on measure N, I will say that when we formulated the directive for that initiative, it had to do mainly with improving the incomes of, or at least the, supplementing the, the pay to our public safety officers. And that is why we formulated the fifty percent of the measure B for the augmentation of those salaries. But then the other fifty percent was for community improvements and other inclusive economic development and it was a split with a thirty, twenty directive. I, I know that in the past, specifically with measure E, it's always been our intent to supplement and not supplant efforts. So for example, we're asking our, our residents for an additional quarter cent tax on every dollar. And, you know, promising that they are going to get outcomes out of that contribution. So we never had in the past, wanted to say, you know, just, oh, well, we'll just take the staff member's salary and put it into that measure. Or, you know, instead we were hoping to, to leverage those funds in order to have matching dollars so that we can do pretty drastic and dramatic things to make an impact in our community. Hence, you know, the, the kids home run and, and other really cool things like the downtown streets team. And not to say that the, the paying for Mark Sawyer's salary wasn't appropriate, especially in the timeframe that we were envisioning it. Because ultimately he is an absolute asset and we were hoping for more sustainable, long-term funding source for that, for that, for his salary. But I, I do see this as like a segue to more permanence as opposed to the landing ground for salaries. And that's something I think that I've voiced in the, in the past. So I would hope that if we did have an oversight commission, that those, those directors were still honored and that we're not just using this money as, as, you know, a pot for salaries and not for innovative things that really truly make an impact on the complexion of our community. With that stated, I know that we are looking at a variety of different priorities when it comes to public safety, whether that be the, you know, funding a new community service officer, CalA support, whether that be funding more equipment, a, a new department, salary increases, a new SWAT vehicle and restoring previous positions that, you know, we currently, we have funding through an over higher policy. So we do have five hundred thousand dollars if we want to hire qualified and vetted officers today. We can do that. But I, and I do ultimately want to restore those positions to make it more permanent. But we do have a lot that is, that, you know, we need to restore with respect to public safety. With respect to my comments on the budget, I do want to say, thank goodness, we have such a highly qualified and committed staff that has put in hour after hour burning the midnight oil in order to make sure that we have it, what it is that we've asked for over the last four weeks. Thank you and your efforts are much appreciated. I, I had a chance to review this again and I appreciate the work of staff, the items that used to be, while that are still exposed on the quote-unquote B-list. They're, they're all very important. They're all items that I think all four of us would want to see ultimately funded as part of our, our city's priorities. Ultimately, many of them have been recommended for a consideration in October for a re-review. And I understand that, you know, right now we have a hundred thousand for Project Home Key Extension, which may, I hopefully will hope to see it restored from county funds as well as other thirty-five and fifteen thousand that are required. And hopefully, or that have more of a timely, they're more urgent. But there were also several that were on my radar that I'm conscientious of. I'm not going to bring them forward. I think that some of them can wait till October, but there was one that, actually two, that, that caught my eye. And I don't want to make it a practice because I think that this budget is good as is, but I really wanted to point out that, you know, Mayor, Mayor Guerrero and I were very active in a situation throughout West Sacramento when we had a power outage a few months ago. For several days, several residents were without power and that included heat and the ability to cook food. And we had a dilemma in West Sacramento that didn't seem to have an, an end in sight for several days. And I recognize that on the B-list, there are two items, one of which is the West Sac PD generator replacement, the other is for City Hall. And given that we are heading into some pretty hot summer months, I would really want to prioritize the ability to have a backup generator system for PD and for City Hall, given that there are information system as well as our public safety system. I, I can't imagine that that would be something, I mean, it's not the biggest ticket item. I, I know that there are others like the corporate, for example, that are, are timely. But for, for the sense of, you know, respecting what the staff has done and the fact that I, I hesitate to make any, any changes at this juncture, I just think that, given the larger issue, you know, there, there's a higher risk and we don't want to be in, see ourselves in a situation where, you know, we are putting, you know, our, our public safety at risk. So I would ask that we remove those two items from item B and, and, and fund them in this, tonight's effort. And with that, I just want to say that, you know, it's our, our attempt to, to build capacity and I, I know that we're trying to promote the ideals of a fiscally sound city and look at other sustainable funding mechanisms, mechanisms that don't considerably deplete our general fund. I just want to make sure that we're being very true to the intent of the measures and respecting what they're supposed to be used for. And that, what, for example, what I want to see out of measure N, I want to see Sacramento Avenue like turnkey, ready for investment. It's, 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 you know, when you get off the tower, or excuse me, the I Street Bridge and you drive all the way to IKEA, there is so much that can be done and, and an area that has not been attended to for a long time. And so when I talk about inclusive economic development, I'm talking about big ticket items just like that. I would, I don't want to trade the salary of somebody to put it into measure N when we can be setting up the infrastructure on, on Sacramento Avenue for so many other wonderful things. And I, I would imagine that Councilmember Akala would agree with that because I know that's has been part of her agenda for, for quite some time. And this is an area that's been overlooked and has great potential for, for us to, to really revamp and revitalize. So thank you for, for staff. I mean, this is recognizing that this has been a several week-long, if not year-long effort. We've, we've just prevailed through very trying and uncertain times. And I shouldn't say we prevailed because we're not sure if we're through it. But hoping that regression into COVID times is, is not a reality, but recognizing it could be a real possibility. We need to really take a conservative approach. So thank you all for, for this effort.
Councilmember Akala? Thank you. I also want to thank the staff for helping me dissect the budget. Aaron, thanks. I had a lot of questions and there's some items that I'd prefer not to have on there, but overall I think the budget is, is a very good working budget. Roberta, thank you for sending those documents that I've requested. You've been very diligent about sending me all the information that I've requested. And I also agree that we should have an oversight commission. I know we have to have more discussion on that. But I think that's something that a lot of our citizens would be very interested in. It, it shows that, you know, we are very transparent, you know, and so I, I would like sooner than later, you know, to have that discussion. And that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Madesma?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments and first of all, on the, I, I, you, you mentioned for mayor that I, I don't think you called for an ad hoc committee, but certainly assigning as a part of the recommended action, you and I do check-ins with staff as we work towards the October thirty first, which I would agree with. But, but I also remind everybody for, we all have weekly check-ins with city manager, probably staff that, that this is an area where we just all need to stay in touch with sort of direction where we're going. There's going to, this, there, there'll be some big, as, as the city manager alluded to, there'll be some, some policy decisions. There's a lot of background and I, I'm, I'm careful especially my colleague, Councilmember Akala, who's, who's first term on the council, just, there's a lot of background. I know I've had to benefit of for ten, eleven years now and it's just, I don't take it for granted. I, there's a lot to understand in the budgeting process and how we've, with the voters backing and their consent on some of these measures appropriated and, and, and made policy, policy decisions about the spending of those. So I think it's just really important to take that time, continue time while I'm, I'm ready to kind of dig, dig, dig in and work with staff as, let them do the work and then work with them to sort of, as we work toward whatever presentation in the fall. That's, that's, that's our, all of our responsibility too. So we don't, we should be, city manager, making sure, you know, everyone checks out as well. And that's part of one comment. So yes, I agree. Let's, but let's make sure we make a commitment to ourselves that we get that done and have a timeline and happy to serve with that. And that gives me towards on the mayor's suggestion of maybe an oversight commission. That is, to me, maybe a separate discussion. I think the priority right now needs to be getting to October thirty first and getting to the policy decisions, but certainly understand your point of view on it and respect it. But I just think it's, you know, to take time on that right at the moment is so the imperative is is get the budget in place and get to work on understanding kind of where we go next. But if that's something we can take off as a recommended action tonight, and maybe find another time appropriate where we can have a larger discussion on that and maybe some other revisions too, if there's necessary to, but to other commissions. I think that was the context we had to the city manager's point, you know, looking at other commissions and where they, where we can augment them. Or, but that, to me, is a lot of work about understanding the scope, what they do. I do want to make one comment, though, that is a relationship, and I know Roberta and I have talked about this with the city manager, is these budgets are really hard to understand. And, and I, everybody knows I'm in the private sector. This isn't anything like private sector budgeting. It's very, public finance is very, budgeting is very different. And I respect the heck out of Roberta and Erin and staff for the work they do. These dealing with various funds with allocated or defined uses and requirements and and it is very, it's very complicated. But we do, done a masterful job of, but we, but one area we can do, and I think maybe we can find some common ground here, is getting the public educated on kind of how this is set up. How did we get here today? We don't do enough of that. I personally don't do enough of that of trying to help the public understand the choices we make financially and why we are where we are. And I know Roberta and I have talked, because she's had background in some workshops she's done in the public. They try to help educate people in kind of on budgeting matters so they understand why certain things are can only be used for X or why the general fund, what the impacts to it are, and why we're making the choices we are. And I think that's just an opportunity for us and, you know, and I'll make that commitment to help Roberta do that. After we get through October, Roberta, but I think it's, maybe that's another avenue we can take to help get that understanding where we are. I think it's really important. And lastly, just again, is, you know, to the notion of capacity and just to be really direct around it. I think we've had a really, like I said, a terrific run that got us to this point, diversifying our portfolio, where our general fund, tax measures come from, we had a really good run and set up these other tax, sales tax measures so that we fund other priorities. But I think city staff, you know, we are setting a priority that we want to be a sustainable budget. We want to make sure the general fund is funded. We want to make sure choices we make are for the future or there. And that's, to me, that's a priority. And then at that point, because I want, I agree. I want the capacity for every employee here that works so hard for our city to have the opportunity for to see increases to support their family. That's, we are a board overseeing employees. And that's been my number one priority is, is do we have the capacity to help, possibly to help every person have opportunities to support them? And that's part of the exercise. Part of the other exercise too is the brilliant department heads we have and the city manager. We will, we will need to grow. We have, the city's grown. We have new needs. We have a burgeoning urban area. We have areas that are, that are kind of coming back, that are growing again. We have, we just have lots of needs. And I think this gives the opportunity for staff to think about long term growth plans over a period of time. We're not going to solve it all in a year or two, but I think this exercise that we're going to go through and in, in October or thereabouts, sets up so that we can make those plans and investments and be strategic about it. And I think that's the part I really like about this is that it gives kind of that, that, that opportunity for department heads to do the work they want to do and come back to us with kind of what their strategy. Certainly, our role here is to set priorities of where we'd like to see services played. But the department heads, part of this process is them telling us, this is what we need to move forward. And I trust our department heads, our police chief and our fire chief to tell us where the growth should be. So, anyway, those are my comments. So, and unless Mary had another question or anything else, I'm happy to forward.
I do have some comments. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
I do think that having a citizens fiscal oversight and accountability commission, you know, and I will give a lot of credit to Erin for, you know, some of the historical work that's been established in being able to take a look at a long term, which is why Roberta, you know, established, you know, when she put the numbers in and with her, you know, expertise on long term financial planning, she did a lot of research and learned how the best, you know, what's the best. That's why she's the chair of our League of Cities. I guess, I don't know exactly what the term is, but it's finance officers. And so, you know, with that, we were able to have the foresight, not not have to deal with it year over year or every two years and then, oh, my God, we don't have enough money, but the foresight to see that, which is, you know, some of the challenges we have in deciding what to fund. And we do, in the city's various measures, have capacity. So there's no need at this point, you know, there's long term plans to take a look at our long term expenses. But, you know, there is a provision in here that describes in the, in the resolution. And there's a lot of wording in there, but it's very important wording, which describes that we have some significant infrastructure costs, which we've heard in the last year. And Councilmember Alcala is newer, but we've heard, you know, hundreds of millions have been both, you know, taking care of our storm drains and taking care of our roads. And we have, I think, you know, just inquiries from our constituents. In addition to that, you know, how to address slowing, you know, the traffic down in some areas, what do we do? What are the like type of signals or speed bumps? So, you know, I think that these are infrastructure needs in addition to making sure that our Department of Public Works has a decent building to work in. I hear that they're building in the rain, but it's not raining. It leaks, you know, during the, you know, during the rainy season. And that's not the best working conditions to place our, our, physically, you know, taxing hardest working members of our community. I toured parks and rec and it looks like a closet. So I don't know how they get all those tools in and out and how they, you know, manage. But their break room is another closet, much smaller than the building. So that's where that, you know, that's where they get briefed and they huddle closely to, you know, to get their assignments and what their workload is like for the day. And so I'd like to be able to, you know, we've grown as a city. We are having a lot of, you know, housing coming in. And I think that, you know, that the planning that our city manager and our finance officer, Roberta, has put together is a good strategy, and that's what gave us a lot of insight. And that's what gave us the information to say, look, if we need to take a look at a longer term plan. And that's why I do trust our, both of you to, you know, to provide for us, you know, some direction, some guidance. And at the same time, as I'm learning, I'd like to carry this out to the public. And I think it's important to do this now. And I understand my colleagues want to take a look at the whole, you know, commission picture. But this particular one, if we're going to be making some changes, for me, the community input is very important. So I will continue to establish mayoral citizen fiscal oversight and accountability, you know, work group and reach out to the public and have some public workshops with them so that they can understand. And I'll be having more questions because I'm sure they'll be asking me some challenging questions and bring it back for some answers. But just have an ongoing dialogue as we have between now and October to prepare what we expect as an outcome to serve, you know, the community and to increase public trust in our financing. And so they don't, not that they have a whole lot of problems, they just see the issues out there and they're not sure what's being done. So I just want to be able to make sure that I can engage them and explain to them. We do have fiscal constraints regardless of how we look at it. It's, it's still there. Don't want to promise anybody anything that we can't afford, but just want to make sure that what we're doing here, if we can't, explain why. And with that, Mayor Protam, I'll accept your motion with the additional recommended actions that you presented, and I'll accept a second.
Second.
Councilmember Alcala, seconds. And May it, Dan, please call the roll.
I didn't offer a motion yet. I think the city manager wants a response. No.
All I wanted to do was just recap to make sure that we're all clear about what that would be. And also just to kind of recap on some of the additional feedback.
Sure. Oh, yes. And we do have the additional items that the council member Rosco wanted to add as far as the two generators, which I would, I support, they wanted to add in there. Go ahead.
Okay. I don't know if you want to have more discussion about those before I do my thing, but, okay. All right. So what we would recommend then is there's really one substantive amendment. In addition to, there is an errata sheet that Roberta mentioned. We request that we incorporate those changes into the action. The additional change would be to fund the two generator replacements, one in City Hall, one at PD. Those are out of the general facilities fund. At least that's how it's proposed. That would also be part of what we look at when we come back in October to make sure that that's the right place to keep them. So we'll take another look at that, but we would ask that you include those with that direction. And then in terms of additional recommended action, something like the consensus was to direct the city manager to come back with the general fund sustainability strategy presented to the council by October thirty first. So that would be a formal recommended action. The other feedback, though, that we would incorporate, take away from this meeting. One would be, we would have an ad hoc committee, wouldn't be a formal subcommittee or anything like that, but the mayor and vice mayor being sort of our sounding board along the way as we develop that strategy. That doesn't mean, though, just my commitment to the other council members that, you know, we're going to, we're going to not touch in with you as we go along in the process. But, but I'll definitely keep you up to date as we go forward. And then on the point about citizen oversight, the city attorney would also remind me that since that wasn't part of the proposed actions for tonight, we wouldn't be able to actually do something tonight. So that, in addition to what I said earlier, that I think that's a, that's a substantive policy discussion the council should have. But we can incorporate some of that exploration into the work that Roberta and I will do in terms of coming back with some options or suggestions of things you could do to address the topics of potential oversight, but also the education piece is something that we agree, you know, Roberta and I talked about that in the past, that it is a complicated budget and municipal financing is very complicated by nature. But it doesn't mean we can't do a better job of trying to boil it down to better explainable terms to members of the public. So those are things that we can explore and at least give some, some, you know, information and options to the council when we bring back that strategy. So if that sounds okay, that would be our modified recommended action and recap of feedback we got, so.
And with that, I would under, agree with all those, that recap and make the recommended action as outlined by our city manager.
And I would, for a second.
Thank you. Madam Pluck, please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor Protamadisma.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Thank you, council members, for that robust dialogue on this particular issue and all the staff, you know, for hanging in there with us. Really appreciate it. Next item is our council calendar. And are there any items under the council calendar?
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a reminder that tomorrow is the Fire Academy graduation, and that's at the Crest Theater, and it will start at six o'clock. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Amanda. City managers report?
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate what you said, and before all the staff leave, we have, we had thirty something people and most of them had something to do with the budget that was prepared. I just want to thank them all again, especially thank Roberta. Most of that midnight oil that was burned was hers, and it was, it was a really good process. We appreciate the council getting through it with us and all the feedback we got. So thank you. In terms of my report tonight, I, just a couple of things. We, obviously, it's going to be hot tomorrow and Friday. And in consideration of that, even though the, the nighttime temperatures don't technically meet the emergency thresholds that are set under the, under the county guidance, we did decide to go ahead and open up City Hall for extra hours to, to make it available as a cooling center, starting tomorrow at noon. It'll be open until seven o'clock, I believe, each night. The nighttime temperatures do pull off quite a bit, but that is something that we decided to do, even though it didn't quite meet the threshold. Anytime it's over a hundred and five in a couple, a couple of days in a row, you know, it's worth consideration. So I went ahead and made that, that call for the next two days. And then also speaking of the next two days, I'm going to be out tomorrow, Friday, just a reminder. I know some of you know that, but Amanda will be the contact in case anything comes up for Thursday and Friday. So, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good time. Councilmember Alcala?
I'm sorry. I was going to ask, Erin, aside from City Hall, is there another place as well that's a cooling center?
Oh, yes. And I don't have the hour in front of me, but I know the Yolo County Library, the Turner Library across the street is also open with limited hours, but it doesn't have the nighttime hours. And that's one of the considerations we took into account to have something available in the evening. Of course, there are neighboring jurisdictions. Sacramento is opening theirs. But in West Sacramento, the only one I know of that's an official, you know, nighttime hours is ours. We always encourage people and we put out advisories on this on our different channels of getting information out to people. That there are, obviously, especially now that the places are open again, there are options out there in the public where people can seek relief. And maybe some retail relief as well. But definitely City Hall is open as an option for people that just need a place to cool off for a while in the afternoon, so. But that helps.
Councilmember Orozco, did you want to add something?
Actually, my, I'm sorry, my, I was off mute. I just want for future agenda items. I'll wait.
Oh, sure. Okay. I wanted to ask you, though. You're familiar with, like, the State Streets area. I heard rumored that the power was out. I have to check. But is that, you live in the neighborhood. Did you experience that?
Today?
Yeah.
I'm actually here now. I, we seem to be in a good spot, but I can't say that for my neighbors. But I guess in the middle of it, we seem to be okay.
You seem to be okay. Okay.
Yeah.
I guess maybe, yeah. Go ahead. Mayor Protamadisma?
Thank you. I was going to add, on the feedback of, I think this is where you may be heading, which is a concern of mine because it came up, I think, from Councilmember Rosco and you. But, but Erin and I know we're hitting a heat wave, that there is concern that somebody at City Hall is in touch with our, our friends at PG&E. And just, I would just urge you to make sure we do have, establish some, some communication with them should there be outages or rolling blockouts. I don't think we're there yet, but we're coming to that time where we have to pay attention to that. So, and also, yeah, that's, that's all I can, other than, Erin, happy birthday. I'm glad we kept our meeting under an hour.
Happy birthday, Erin. Yeah.
All I wanted was a budget, so thank you.
And I also wanted to, you know, ask my colleagues, you all have some experience working with vulnerable members of our community in one way or another, you know, working with the elderly and working with your family members and working in vulnerable communities where there's no air conditioning and heat and mobile home parks. I just wanted to ask if there's any other guidance, you know, to recruit volunteers, to distribute information so they're aware of our cooling centers. And you don't need to, you know, share now, but if you wanted to pass that information along to your city manager, I'm sure you've got some, some ideas that we can, we can, you know, put together and just help our members of the community who aren't aware in traditional, our traditional modes of communication so that they, that they are familiar. And I'd be willing to help gather some volunteers to spread the word in some way.
If there are points of contact in that space, then please email both Amanda and Paul Hossen, who coordinates, at least for the next couple of days, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. And, thank you. Next is our city attorney report.
I have nothing to report tonight.
All right. Staff direction from city council members? Then, future agenda item request by council. Councilmember Orozco?
Yay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so I, I did submit a request that our council consider a very unique resolution or proclamation to honor someone who has dedicated decades of his life to helping uplift the experiences of of his life to helping uplift the experiences of some of our young little leaguers. As the council is aware, it's my first time being a mom of a child who, whose team waited to the championships and is representing West Sacramento in the Tournament of Champions. So, they are out there playing in the Toms, representing our city. And out there also is someone we call Joe the Umpire. And Joe Ramirez is someone who, gosh, if you're, if you work in the snack bar, you'll see him before games and he'll say, here's $20. I need $20 for the hot dog tickets. And if you're new, you're like, what are you talking about? But everybody knows him. They know that he'll buy the tickets. And then when he's out on the field and he sees something, maybe some good sportsman-like conduct or a good play, he'll give one of those tickets to our youngsters and they'll come after the game and they'll redeem it for hot dog. And it's to see the impact on the players and to see someone who's using his own money to go out there and inspire, to give bubbles to some of the players. And even when you walk around the neighborhood, he'll be like, oh, you have any kids? Here's a wooden airplane. And it's very cool. You don't see people out there doing things like that as often. And it's just remarkable. And I just love that. So, I just, I wanted to bring it back before council. And I know I've spoken with the mayor today and I know she's in support of this item. And I just wanted to put that out there in hopes that maybe in August, we could come back and honor one of our peers out in the community who is doing so much for our kids.
Thank you, Councilmember Orozco. It's always nice that our councilmembers who are so integrated, you know, your family, your, our kids are involved in the community. And we get to be able to spot, you know, some heroes who uplift our children and just add so much light and presence of caring and comfort to, to our youth who need it. You never know. There could be, you know, some family who's troubled and going through a hard time and, and Joe's just there to provide that support. So, thank you so much for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. And can I also add, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The West Sacramento AAA Giants just won another game and they're advancing against one of, yeah, they're going to be advancing tomorrow night, or excuse me, Friday night against one of the regional teams. So, go West Sac.
All right. I was trying to get my little hand flap, but I can't find it under my, congratulations. I know it's all because everybody's working very hard and you're beating all their kids' their Wheaties and doing a good job.
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Just to sticking with the policy, I'm supposed to chime in and tell you if staff has bandwidth to complete that item on future agenda requests. And I can say that, yes, we can do that one. So, we'll look at the future council agendas. I'm also supposed to read for consensus and sounds like we're good there.
Yes.
We'll schedule it for either July 14th and August 4th, the next two meetings. We'll work that out.
Okay. Thank you. And can, Councilmember Alcala is new. Can you explain what the process is so that she understands if she wanted to present something to?
Sure. And I can, I can actually forward her. It's in the procedures manual, but it's this is a specific section. So, I'll forward you the guidance on it. But essentially, on this part of the agenda, the policy reads that the council member sends an email to the city manager making the request. We agendize it for just basic discussion to make sure that there's consensus about it. And then once, and then, and then ask me, hey, do we have anything to do it? And then once we make that determination, we schedule it for a future item. So, we try to keep within, you know, for things like proclamation resolutions, something that has a direct tie to the community, something the city's working on. But it also pertains to other, other items that may be more, you know, policy-related things like that. So, a lot of those discussions, you know, we have through our individual discussions. But if it's something that you want to raise to the council, that's the policy for doing this. So, I'll send it to the whole council, actually, just as a reminder after this meeting.
Thank you, Erin. And the next item is adjourned. And I wanted to adjourn in memory. And I purposely added, you know, Chief Strange to do the pledge of allegiance today to represent our police family and his family. Officer James McKnight was shot 30 years ago today while attempting to serve a search warrant as part of the Yolo County Narcotics Enforcement Team on June 15, 1990. And Officer McKnight served West FPD since its incorporation in 1987. And he was a dedicated officer until his end of watch on June 16, 1990. So, I thought some prayers go to his family. And I've met his wife, Gail, and she carries, you know, this loss deeply. And there's a memorial that happens at the, at the court and she's always present there, you know, representing the family. And just wanted to make sure that we all remember Officer McKnight and his sacrifice and his family's sacrifice and our Sacramento Police Department's sacrifice, who they think about daily and making sure that everybody's safe. So, with that, I'd like to adjourn in memory and ask for a motion.
Second.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Mayor Protamadisma.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.